All right, we're going to get started with our work session this evening. I'm going to turn everything over to the Community Engagement Committee.
So we'll, we just want to take the board through a couple of loose ends. And there'll obviously be more emails coming. But I think the, the most important thing is all of the work that everybody did providing suggestions. The heroic work that Rosie did and Phil did in getting locations set up. Most of our community meetings are set up. There are a few outstanding, specifically embark Oak Ridge in Camigo. But we feel like we have a sightline on getting those scheduled. If we don't, we will come back to the group to seek other additional ideas. Everybody appears to have signed up with the exception of Terry, but we're working with her schedule availability. And if not, we'll all just step up and fill in those holes. A press release went out today and with Terry's quote, "The website is live." For anybody that you talk to at this point, they can be going to the website. They can take the survey. They can sign up, they can pre-register for meetings. It's not mandatory. It is mandatory to pre-register for virtual meetings. So, because that's the way that they're going to get the link.
Where's the website? Phil, what's the actual website? You can come sit up here if you want.
I couldn't find it on the website.
Add something probably tomorrow on that top section, the, kind of the big slideshow on the top of the homepage and just leave it up there for, for weeks, months. So it's front and center on the homepage as well.
Oh, it is on there.
The other thing I'll just say is because the first meeting is at East on Saturday, we are doing a specific push to all the schools in the east feeder patterns. So all principals have received notification and asked them to share the information. In addition, for language next steps and navigating interpretation requests, I'm going to turn it over to Maria just for a quick update or anything she wants to say on that. Sorry, she has food in her mouth.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, BFLs agreed to serve as interpreters and remain the entire time with us, not only really to interpret, but also to arrange any childcare needs that we might have, as well as any food or anything that we are going to be providing at our meetings. So in terms of language, I think that we are good.
So, and you'll see on the, when you pre-register, you can request interpretation services. So if anybody is asking about interpretation services, they can go there, check the box and state the language that they're seeking.
I did have a question, Rosie, for you. I was just thinking about with online, how would interpretation services work? And I, only because I'm familiar using Zoom with interpretation services, but I'm not sure if Teams has that same functionality. You know?
They do. I haven't looked into it a lot. There is like something to connect to. So I have to research that a little bit to see. Otherwise we would, because everybody would be on Teams. So we would have to have the interpreter online. So it might extend the meeting time a little bit if we choose to go that way, where they're doing a live interpretation.
I'm trying to, because in Zoom, when you have interpreter services, you turn it on and then the interpreter can, will then interpret for the person and then we'll interpret back and you don't hear the interpreter.
Right.
And so I don't know if Teams is the same.
And that's what I have to research a little bit more. I know there is a function. I just don't know, like if it's accessible to us, like if we have access to that.
I'm happy to practice with you.
Yeah, I had to check it a little bit, a little more into it.
Okay, no, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
I think the number one thing that we need from everybody in terms of how everybody can help is to push out the press release as laying out all of the information for the community meetings and the survey. And for those of you that are wondering about language, you can actually, Google Translate has the functionality on that site. And so it can translate into multiple languages if we're trying to push it out in different languages. But just remember, all of the groups that you wanted to make sure people were included, that's really got to be our push now. So we've got to send out the information to all of the groups that you expressed interest in wanting to engage. So that's where the focus of our energy should be. I want to turn it over to Kelly for just a bit to talk about meeting success. And one part of meeting success is the script. But there's a few other things that Kelly, I think you wanted to address around roles that people play and things of that nature, maybe the handout.
Before you go there, Maria, you mentioned childcare and refreshments. Is that a part of our agenda today? Or you said if we provide those things, are we planning on providing those things? You had said the BFLs will help if.
They would help.
So I think that when, so thinking back to the community conversations that we had, I know that the schools provided or different sites provided food for people.
Right.
That was something that the BFLs recommended and they said that they would assist. Now, funding, where will that come from? I am not sure.
The board account?
I'm not sure we landed. I would say that honestly, so much of our time and energy up until today was just getting the meeting location set, getting the survey out, getting the website live. I think like where we're moving next tomorrow, I mean, Kelly and I had kind of talked about this, is the fine tuning of all the details. So food is a part of it. I think there is a question, do we have money? Because, and if we do have money, then it's just a matter of execution.
Yeah, and I, I ask only because I think that those two pieces of information are, will be critically important as we push out the information of please, please join us. We will have childcare, we will have some sort of refreshments. Yeah.
So, great question, more to come. I think that's where we've got work to do.
Thank you.
Okay, real quick. I know, Duana, you had mentioned a QR code or something that we could use. So going back to Jackie, what you referenced is making sure folks get all this out to their colleagues, to whoever they work with. Is there a way to get whether, I know Phil, like a postcard size or something we could, like if you're in a meeting, you could just share them or, I don't know. That would be an easier way to maybe help folks connect with the link and access survey. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We can actually just ask Phil if we can do it.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think that just a matter of if we could, yeah.
Handout at all of these sessions and to send home with people with. So yeah, we can do a QR code very easily, do a postcard.
Yeah.
Just, we'll just make it, I mean, tell me what.
You're saying to learn more information and participate?
Right, and I'm thinking like, yes, for, so for folks who are at the in-person who maybe forgot or thought of something after they left the, the meeting, they could go in and they could take the survey, so that piece. But then also, if I'm just meeting, if somebody has a Rotary Club meeting or a Kiwanis Club meeting and they just want to share the info with folks in that room, they have something they could give to them to be able to give them a quick access to the survey.
We can aim, knock on wood, that we'll have it ready for Saturday.
Awesome. Okay, thanks. That's great. Even QR code that we could just print off on a piece of paper and put on tables, that could be easy enough to.
Yeah, we could do something at least to have in the filler if we don't have a better piece put together. But yeah, QR code, we could do that right now.
Okay.
That'll be pretty easy.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so with the meetings, there are, I know a couple more that, that Maria, you, that we got to get added in there that you had heard back from BFLs. So we'll get that on the list too, for folks to sign up for. In terms of board member roles, and I kind of, where's Cindy? I don't know where she's at.
I think AJ's on.
Oh, okay, and AJ's on. So I know the intention is that one person will play the role of the presenter and facilitator and one person will pay, play the role of the note keeper. And that is so that when we're, when two people are in those sessions, that we have the strong notes coming back and being shared back with our coaches so that they can really compile all the data to then share with us. And so, you know, just understanding that one person as facilitator, one person as note keeper. We have a handout that Phil and his team put together. When we talk about, there's a section in the script that talks about superintendent duties and we wanted to delineate between what's community superintendent, school board, staff and students. So the team did a great job of putting together a one pager that could be used as a handout. So those handouts should come along with folks. Logistics, we talked about like supplies. So, and so AJ, I keep looking in the room for Cindy, but she's not here. So I'm calling upon you now. Because part of this is, I just have questions around, is it best for us to have a certain criteria of how we do note keeping? Does it make sense that it's dependent upon, like some people like to take notes on their computers and that's super easy. AJ, you and I haven't had a conversation yet around how do you want this information shared back with you? Does it make sense through a Google Doc or through taking pictures or a write-up? Like, there's some, there's still some loose ends that you and I have to connect around, but also wanting to make sure, you know, what makes sense for the process? So are you there? Are you there?
I don't see anything.
Table that?
Yeah.
Go on. Okay, well, is Cindy? Oh, she is in the hallway. Thank you, thank you. So then with that, that kind of helps bring together of, ideally what would help is if we have the, all of the items or the supplies, that we have like a supply bag, if you will, for folks that are going out. So everybody's got the same thing in the bag. We're all going into the sessions with the same stuff. So I think it's a matter of deciding, like my big thing was, I know Jackie and I, you and I had a conversation of, do we need flip chart paper? Or is somebody going to just take the notes via their computer or notebook? So what makes sense?
Can we just make that decision and just say, can we all just use our laptops and use a format from AJ? Would people feel comfortable just doing it that way and avoiding the flip chart and all the easels and?
My only concern with that is if people attend but aren't necessarily comfortable voicing out loud their opinion, having a way in which they can write on a Post-it and put it somewhere or note cards or something.
So we do have blank note cards. So when we talked about it, it was in the context of like parking lot items more than anything, right? So people are going to want to talk about a lot of things. And so how do we basically acknowledge that people may want to talk about a lot of things, but we need to stay on track? So the blank note card was to serve that purpose. I think if you're saying create a vehicle so people can ask, like submit questions or submit feedback, I think Kelly, just make a decision and tell us what you think makes sense.
Well, I think, if I'm understanding your question, I think, thinking about the person that, so we put the question out there, what are you looking for in a superintendent? And we've got all these people in the room that are giving us those answers. But there might be someone that's not comfortable with saying their answer out loud. So would we have some note cards available for them to where they're answering that question and they're just putting that on a note card? And then at the end, we're collecting note cards and we can add that to our script. Because there might be some people in the room who aren't comfortable with just speaking out loud or feel like, well, these other folks are doing all the talking, so I'm just going to sit back and listen. So I think just, is there something that we have for them in case they want to say something? But just write it down.
Well, and then, yeah, I think in, in order to make it easy for the participant, having that flip chart with question one and your answer to question one, put it on that flip chart on a Post-it. And then we can certainly take pictures of those flip charts with the Post-its so that we're super transparent about the answers that we're getting, both in person as well as online.
It's kind of how we approached when we were doing our goals conversation is we just had everything up there for people and they approached the everything and put everything there. And then we just took all of that back with us.
Yeah.
And then put that information together. So that might be the style of setup that.
So I'm hearing flip chart, Post-its and note cards.
Note cards and pens, obviously name tags, sign in sheets.
Rosie's got a own supply list, so we'll just.
So I think just making sure that stuff gets added so that we have that. Yep.
At that. Right now I currently have the name tags. We have about 500 name tags, just in case we have a lot of attendees. Tank cards, that's for the board member, your name and the district. The handouts, which will be coming from Phil. And then I can photocopy any extras. And then the index cards, pens and the flip chart and Post-its. That's currently what it makes up.
And then markers for the flip charts.
Okay.
Yep. So then, does it make sense, Rosie, to have a couple made? And then we can just stop in, whoever is leading the session to stop in and pick it up? Okay, that, okay.
Can we just make that a board member two responsibility? So that we know whoever is, so if each of us get a, um, supply of those things, then it's the responsibility of board member two to bring that, that night?
I think the only thing I'd say is I'm not sure when people signed up A or B, they understood.
Yeah.
Right? So like, oh, maybe it's up to the board pair to decide who's, yeah, who's going to be, who's going to lead and who's going to, yeah.
Don't take, yeah. Yeah, if they can be here and then folks can just stop in and pick up if there are a couple of them, that they could come pick up the packet, if you will. Okay.
Do you want it in here or do you want it at the district office? Because during the day, there's classes and then we don't have access to this room.
I would think the district office should be fine. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, so when we signed up, folks probably didn't know that there could have been identified a role for one and for two, that one would be identified as, for example, the facilitator and two is the note taker. But it's okay, like just make sure you're connecting with your pair, your partner, who wants to play what role. And that you just make those arrangements ahead of time so that you don't walk in, maybe carrying the items or both go on who's facilitating. So just please have those conversations.
And we'll, we'll tighten, as you can tell, we've got some work to do, but we're just so fired up that we got as far as we did by today. So we'll tighten it all up and, and probably do one more communication.
Yep, and I know I'll have a little bit of information to share out. I think just with the school's connection with students, because some of that will be falling on you guys to just confirm those arrangements. I just did an initial outreach. Some dates were set, some were not. And so just looking to you and your partner to confirm. So that's all that I had. Is there, Maria and Jackie, anything else that you can think of? Okay.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
So I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the version, the Spanish version. Are we able to change anything on what we have on the website?
Phil, do you want to come up here?
What is the?
La junta, it just, la junta means like.
Yeah, we can make those changes relatively quickly. The press release already went out, but the website Phil and his team maintained. So that's really relatively quickly to change.
And then superintendent, maybe just superintendente instead of plural, because it makes it sound like we're looking for several superintendents rather than one.
Do you want me to write those edits down? Or do you want to review it a little bit more and get back to me?
I think I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna go ahead and take a look.
Yeah.
Who translated it?
It's Google Translator.
Oh.
That's how DMPS does things in English. And for the press release, they.
So I don't know that we'll be able to change that.
Why don't we take it offline and have Phil and Maria talk about?
Yeah.
So when you go to the website.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just didn't know that was driven by Google, that's all. Yeah.
All right. I think then next up would be Cindy.
Would be the script. And I did look at it, so there's two scripts embedded in this document. So the, I think the first part is new, the, and then there's like a blank page after. And then it has the old script in the back, so I.
Yeah, there is, there should actually be like three versions of the script. So the first one, like the, the back pages, the end of it, is the first original script that we got. And then we pared down to two questions. And then you'll see, then we got the two questions. And then if you look at the link I sent online, the only difference between them is just the flip flop of superintendent duties with process overview and timeline. That would have been the only difference. And it removed one of the drawings.
Okay, so I think I clicked on the link you had. Am I missing something on this one? I just want to make sure.
So the stuff, like the, what, the information, it's showing up in mine in green ink, if you're online.
Okay. I, you just sent us an email, didn't you?
Yeah.
And I don't see, yeah, because I, I think the link that you gave me, I went and compared these pages to like the beginnings of this and they matched. So that's why I'm trying to see if I'm missing an additional one somewhere.
Well, they're, put it this way, the final, final is just swap, superintendent duties.
Right.
And process overview. That's the only difference. And then removal of the more extensive photo. I don't, I, all I can say is I sent you to the Google Doc.
Okay, no, I think the link, the link I, you have, I see the extra and we can figure that figured out. But yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I, I got the newest, newest script and I, maybe that's what's missing for this one. Okay. But we're ready to go through it, aren't we? The script?
Yeah. That's why I'm looking at Cindy. Oh. Yep, I will.
You're in there.
You're in there. But yeah, I'll copy.
Email. Kelly, tell me again, you said superintendent, which one flip flop?
And process overview.
Okay, these two. Oh, these go like this? So superintendent duties first and then process. Got it, thank you. If I'm sitting here like, the difference.
Don't know, I don't have one. All right, who wants a partner with me? Let's get this going. Anyone, anyone? Yeah, let's do it. I think we're all working off the same one, aren't we? Is this not the right one? Yeah, it's the right one. It's just on page four, which is one, two, three, four, flip flop.
In the back part.
Oh, yeah.
That second script, don't ignore it.
Yeah, yeah, ignore the back pages, just on page four, just flip flop those two sections. Process overview and timeline and superintendent duties, just flip flop.
Thank you for joining us for this important conversation. We know your time and input are valuable. So we are grateful for the opportunity to hear from you. My name is Kim Martirano. I'm a board member in District One and I'm joined by my colleague, Duana Bradley. Our purpose is to get input from you that will help guide the hiring of our next superintendent. To help us select the best candidate for the job, it's important for you to know the difference between the school board's role and the superintendent's role. The community is in charge of the school system. The community collectively, not individually, is the moral and legal owner of the school system. It's the community's tax dollars, the community's school buildings and the community's children. That's why in this picture, the community is at the top. But there are too many people in our community to make these decisions. So long ago, the community decided to hire a group of representatives who would ensure that the community's collective vision and values were honored. This group of people is referred to as the school board. The job of the school board is to represent the vision and values of the community. A major part of the job is writing down the vision. We call those the goals. And the values, we call those the guardrails. But there are too many school board members to run the day-to-day operations of the district. If you have seven people all trying to tell the staff what to do, it would be chaos. In addition, the school board is not an educational expert. So it's not the best group to run the school district on a day-to-day basis. Instead, the board hires an education expert and tasks them with running the district as long as they focus on accomplishing the goals, the community's vision, while honoring the guardrails, the community's values. But there are too many children in DMPS for the superintendent to educate all by themselves. So an important part of their job is hiring all of the staff and the principals and the teachers necessary to educate our children and providing the staff with the supports they need to be successful. And then back to the process, okay. The school board is listening to the community and then will use the information to help create the superintendent search process. Each step along the way, we will update our website to keep you informed. After the listening is complete, we will create the candidate application, post the application so that anyone can apply and wait at least two weeks for applicants. Once the application window closes, then we will apply the criteria we've developed, criteria that you are helping us create today and identify a group of semifinalists to interview. Our hope is to hire our next superintendent before the school year ends. What questions do you have about the superintendent search process?
How much money are you going to pay the, the next superintendent?
How much, I'm going to read the, repeat the question so that everyone can hear. How much money are we going to pay the next superintendent? We have developed a, a compensation and analysis to determine the best range for our next superintendent. The next superintendent's qualifications as well as expertise will also play a role in the offer that we provide to them.
Is that information public?
Absolutely.
When?
I have no idea.
Did you say you were?
The superintendent's offer will be public once accepted and the board approves the hiring. So prior to the end of the school year, that would be public information. Great question.
What did you say you were?
I'm a school board member for District One.
District One, what's that?
Yes, it is the northwest side of Des Moines. Where do you live?
I live on the south side.
Okay.
Just real quick, I'm going to, what I'm going to recommend is, and I know we're having fun here, but affirm that they have spoken, do not judge how they have spoken. So things like great question or that inadvertently.
Thank you for your question.
Other people, might turn other people off or if they're, or wonder why, well, she didn't tell me I had a good question.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy, I just have a question too. How long do you go down the question loop? Because I could imagine that, you know, one person finds out, oh, you answered my question. Great, she's going to answer mine. Oh, and then I get one too. And then, oh, why didn't you answer my question? Because you answered the other three. So when does that kind of become an appropriate time? So when does that kind of become an appropriate time to stop? Or is it that those questions, um, might be tabled for, you know, thank you for that great question. You know, or kind of how to push us into it. Cause I could imagine that question loop could go for quite some time.
Yeah. And, and AJ, if you are in the ether as well to answer this, there might be some questions like that that could be, um, maybe an FAQ document. Um, that you could put out there right, right from the beginning, like our, this is our process, this is our timeline. We don't know, you know, we don't have a, a figure. I think AJ's off mute.
Yes, um, she's absolutely correct. You are going to hear the exact same questions over and over and over. It will be very valuable to demonstrate a rolling frequently asked questions document that identifies all the questions and make sure that each of you, when responding to them, can give the same set of factual data. Uh, that's a normal part of this process.
But then how long do you continue that kind of entertaining questions from people? Like is there, is there a point where we push that on and that, I think that's where, what I'm seeking is just as we're starting this? Because those questions will come, but when do we kind of push things forward?
So I don't actually recommend that you open the floor for generic questions. If I put that in the script, um, then I apologize. Um, um, I don't think opening the floor to any type of question at all, um, is a good plan, uh, for the script. Uh, that rather if people have questions about the process that we're going to go through for the evening, um, I'd certainly be responsible with those inquiries. Um, but if the script is suggesting that there are questions about anything that's on people's mind, then I just did a poor job of directing the script and it needs to be edited.
Okay. So under process overview and timeline, the very last statement, what questions do you have about the superintendent search process? Will strike that?
Yeah, the intention is, um, to ask, to check if people have questions about the process that you're taking them through that evening. Um, not everything in general. Otherwise you'll spend much of the evening doing that. Um, as a balance, I think you can add that in at the very end. Now that we've gone through this, you know, what questions do you have about the entirety of the process? And I think that's perfectly reasonable. Uh, but I wouldn't start that way. Otherwise you'll burn through a lot of time, uh, doing that.
Will you be making that update then for us?
I will do as I'm asked.
I'm making notes in the document. Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to continue then with session norms and logistics? To make time for as many voices as possible to be heard, we will ask each person to limit themselves to no more than two minutes each. Are there any questions about these norms?
So Kim, is this where we change, we'd add the post-it note? We kind of preview how that fits into the?
Um, to, cause I think we could add a line here. To make time for as many voices as possible to be heard, we will ask each person to limit themselves to more, no more than two minutes. If you would prefer to write your, um, comments on a post-it note and share it on the poster board, you are welcome to do so. All of your tables have post-its, all of the walls have.
Yeah.
The, the necessary questions. Is everyone in agreement?
Yep.
As you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact us personally or visit the superintendent search website at superintendentsearch.dmschools.org.
Yeah.
All right. Are we ready?
Yes.
As the school board, we need to think about what would make someone ideal for the job? What are things about the next superintendent that would inspire you to remain and be involved with the school district? What's something about how the superintendent does the job that would be important in the next superintendent? What are ideal traits?
I'd really like that person to be nice.
Jackie, thank you for being the first to share. You'd like that person to be really nice. Who will be the next to share?
I want the person to be honest.
You would like the person to be honest. Thank you.
This is actually a real question. You, I, I, what I hear, what I see you doing is repeating what they said to make sure that you got it.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes. Breaks it so we're not going like person to person.
Um, and I want to, I want to speak on that practice right quick. It's not enough for you to listen to people. It's absolutely essential during this process that you create for people the experience of having been heard. Um, and so whatever technique you need to use to do that, make sure that that is what you are trying to accomplish. It's not enough for you to have listened. You want to create for participants the experience of having been heard. And so the technique that you saw Kim using to accomplish that is she reflected back what she heard people say. Um, express gratitude, but notice she did not agree or disagree with what they shared. She's like, well, that's a horrible idea or that's a great idea. Thank you for that. That's, that's perfectly what we're looking for. She didn't agree or disagree. That is important. The moment you cast judgment, whether positively or negatively, you will make it a less psychologically safe environment for the next person to participate. Cause now they're going to be wondering, am I going to get the negative comment? Or am I going to not get the affirming comment? Like what, what did I do wrong? And it undermines their experience of having been heard and enhances their experience of having been judged. And so that's the technique, whether, how, each of you probably have your own technique for doing it, but that's what you want to accomplish. You want to not offer any judgment. You want to offer gratitude that they contributed, but not offering judgment about their comment. And you want to create for them the experience of having been heard. Um, and whatever technique you use, um, just get really good at accomplishing that.
I think they should have kids. You think they should have kids. Thank you, Maria.
Is there ever, this is a question AJ or someone, is there ever a point you would ask for further clarification on a comment? And what if the comment is like, I think that, I mean, if it's like something that, I don't know. Right. That's what, yeah.
Tell me more about that.
Want to entertain those comments? How do we address those controversial comments? Like I believe that they shouldn't be reading these books. I don't, I mean, are we just literally affirming we hear everything or writing everything down? No matter how?
No matter, no matter what it is, it is a reflection of the interest of someone in your community. It is not for you to agree or disagree with it. So if somebody says, I don't believe in hiring any female because women can't lead. Uh, it's like, I heard you say you don't believe in hiring females because women can't lead. Um, thank you for your comment. Write that down. Who will be the next to share? Um, your task here is not, you know, to tell people that they're right or wrong in what they're recommending. Your job is to create for them the experience of having been heard. Um, it is appropriate to ask for clarification. So for example, I think it was Maria that said, I think they should have kids. I might ask the follow-up question. Maria, when you say you think they should have kids, do you mean that if they have children, they should, uh, have them in the district? Or did you just generally mean that you wouldn't hire anyone if they've never raised children of their own? And then Maria can, and so that type of clarification, totally appropriate. Um, but you absolutely do not want to offer judgment. And yes, you want to be clear about this. Someone is going to say something that sounds utterly ridiculous to your way of seeing the world. They have the right to share that and to be received generously by you, their representative, as they do so. And so you all are just going to need to gird yourselves against this. It is inevitably going to happen. Um, you should assume it's going to happen because it is definitely going to happen that somebody's going to say something that you find absolutely reprehensible. And your job is not to agree or disagree, to thank them for having, uh, shared, to add it to the feedback that you received and move on. You all, the seven of you, will have the final say on how you use the community's feedback. Um, but you do not want to be in a position of trying to police what feedback you do or don't get. Cause that will actually shut down voices that you want to hear, um, in addition to shutting down voices that you don't want to hear.
Thank you.
Anyone else? What are ideal traits? Hearing no others, let's go on to the second question. As the school board, we need to select fair and measurable reasons to not consider someone for the job. We need to think through what are things that should make us not even look at someone's application? What are fair and measurable criteria that should exclude someone from being considered as the next superintendent? What are exclusionary criteria? The floor is open.
What, what do you mean by that?
We would like to know, what are your deal breakers? What is it that we should absolutely not consider as appropriate for our next superintendent? Is, does that help?
Yeah.
They can't live outside of Des Moines. They need.
They can't live outside Des Moines.
Yeah.
Thank you. So the superintendent should not be considered if they live outside of Des Moines. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, maybe Iowa. They need to be Iowans. They can't be not from our state.
If, if the candidate lives outside of Iowa, they should not be considered as a candidate. Is that correct?
Yep, go Hops. Go clones.
Thank you. What are fair and measurable reasons to not consider someone for this job? Who will be the next to share? Fair and a measurable reason to not be considered for our next superintendent?
They should have a college degree.
So if a candidate does not possess a college degree, we should not consider them for the next superintendent? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
I know. They should have 20 years of experience in a classroom and/or building leadership.
The applicant, if the applicant does not have 20 years' experience as a teacher or in education, they should not be considered. Am I hearing that correctly?
Like, or if they were like a principal or an associate principal.
So the requirement should be that our applicants have worked in a school building for 20 years. Is that correct? Let me try again. Our superintendent candidates should not be considered if they have not had at least 20 years of experience as one of the following positions. Teacher, assistant principal, dean, s- s- principal, student support facilitator, instructional coach, reading support specialist, BFL. Is that correct?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Or building leadership, like she said the first time.
Did she say building leadership?
Yeah. So, so.
What is building leadership though?
Write it down. You all get to decide. Because that would be, I would be very put off if, and I know you were.
I was joking. I would not.
I know you were, but, but. We're going to practice. Let's.
Okay.
Practice.
Thank you.
Me too. I don't think that we should have someone who has not taught in like really diverse areas.
We should not consider a candidate for superintendent if they have not taught in a diverse school district or diverse area?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is it appropriate to ask what diversity means to them? Like how, how many questions or how far do we dig?
So, so two things. One, you're doing a really great job of taking what people are offering and of restating it, um, to make sure that there's clarity about what they mean. And what it's doing is it's nudging your, um, uh, practice participants to be a little bit more clear about what their intention is. This is a really, really healthy practice. So the board members, I recommend you do likewise. And in fact, we can upgrade the script to, um, give you, to write down some of the tactics that Kim is using so that they're more at your fingertips. Um, but yes, I would say it's absolutely appropriate. If, as you repeated back, the exclusionary criteria is particularly not clear to you as the person leading the conversation, then it's not going to be useful, um, later on. And you won't actually be able to honor, uh, the feedback from the community. So it, it, it does matter that you leave having some understanding of what people actually meant, even if that means you have to ask a few follow-up questions. Uh, but that is entirely healthy in this context.
Is it appropriate to provide examples to get conversations started?
I would generally avoid conversations unless it is, um, examples, unless it is absolutely, absolutely necessary. Uh, you don't want to accidentally anchor your participants around your idea. And given that there are seven of you, each of the seven of you might give a different example. And so then you're anchoring them around each of your seven ideas and you're contaminating your, you know, your data. Um, and so I would actively avoid giving example. What I might do instead is I might invite somebody to give an example. Can somebody give, uh, if it's truly quiet, can somebody give an example? What's an example of a criteria, you know, that if they don't meet, uh, that we might exclude them from consideration? Um, and ask it that way for someone to give an example. Sometimes that will feel a little bit safer. The people don't feel like they're giving their real answer. I'm giving example. Oh, I don't think. Uh, an example is maybe they shouldn't be included if they don't own a cow. Okay, got it. If they don't own a cow, they shouldn't be, you know, considered, you know, for a superintendent role. Got it. That's a perfect example of exclusionary criteria. Uh, now that we've had an example put out there, who will be the first to share? So that's the way I might handle that. Instead of give an example, I might just ask for, you know, a silly example just to help, uh, you know, illustrate the point.
Thank you. Those are our questions. After we complete the community listening part of this process, we will create two public documents. One document that has all of the raw feedback from these sessions and one document that has a summary of how we are using the feedback you've provided. As you have any additional feedback, please don't hesitate to complete the survey on the superintendent search website at superintendentsearch.dmschools.org. Thank you again for joining us for this important conversation. We are grateful for you taking the time to share your vision and values with us. Have a wonderful day.
Kim and Duana, thanks for taking copious notes.
Um, I have a question.
I have a question. I think I really wrote down in the thing that resonated with me, but make sure everybody feels heard. At the same time, well, I'm not sure we're going to see lots of people coming. We did say that we wanted to adhere to, I mean, 60 minutes, but ideally 45 minutes. So how, at some point, if we find ourselves in a situation where we have to cut off the first question to get to the second question to stay within a 60-minute timeframe in terms of norming, do we... I was wondering if we want to outline at the beginning of the meeting something that says... Or do we say it enough? Because at some point, we may have to cut off discussion because we're trying to be respectful of people's time. So I'm just, I want to make sure we're all handling those situations the same way should we be so blessed with that much feedback. Thoughts? Me?
I...
Yeah. Do we agree that that's a good practice? And so you run it as though it's a 60-minute meeting?
I think I want to be mindful of not cutting people in the room off. And I know we don't know what our crowds are going to look like, so you know how that feels. But I guess I don't want anyone to feel like, you know, two questions need to be asked, in my opinion. We've got to ask those two questions. But I also want to make sure everyone in the room feels like they can answer that. And so I don't know if it goes back to our norms too because what can actually happen too is that I answer the question once and then I hear no one talking and then I come back and say something and then someone else talks and then I come back and say something again. So I don't know if that comes up too with setting up our norms. But I want to make sure everybody in the room is heard, that wants to be heard, without feeling like we have to tell ourselves, well, 60 minutes is up, like we're out the doors. So I think we're going to have to...
We'll see how the first few go, too.
Yeah, I think as facilitators, we're going to have to gauge the way that it's going. And I know it's going to look different for everyone, but I'd be a little apprehensive about just saying, that's it, you know, let's go. So I don't know what the balance is between that.
Do we discuss... I mean, we say about that, we discuss the time piece at the beginning and just reiterate, you know, if we are running short, please use the QR code, use the post-its. You know, we acknowledge that we don't want to miss anyone's feedback or input. Well, that's a question I have too. I worry about the conversations that might happen if board members are pulled aside after the meeting and it's just one-on-one. How does that get truly reflected in the feedback?
I almost think that's where it's just that direction back to the survey, if they have more feedback to share their thoughts.
I think that's really smart. Go ahead, Sam.
Right?
So, um, could be, would put a time limit when you're, even if you haven't gotten everyone, unless there's maybe one more person to get to, go ahead and get to them. But be cognizant that we have time for one more question. Who will be next? And then if you didn't get an opportunity to share, you know, we have, I'm ready to stick it, we put it on the poster board. We're going to be providing our survey link. You'll have an opportunity to answer it there. And then move on to the second, that kind of keep on...
Do we say that in the norms?
Just so you all know, I'm struggling to follow the conversation because not everybody's using microphones.
I think I may have unplugged her.
Oh.
I think you might want to check the next one.
Okay. Is this one? Okay. I just mentioned the idea of having a blocked time limit for each question because if they're honoring time for folks on the front end to answer all of the questions and number one, they might not... There might be people who only have until, only have that hour and have to leave before they get a chance to answer the second question. So being mindful of the time, keeping the same amount of time for both, for each question and saying something to the effect of, we have time for one more answer and then directing them to the sticky notes and the survey if they didn't get an opportunity to speak.
So do we list that? Do we kind of say those things in our norms kind of at the beginning? That we're, we'll be spending so much time on question one and question two? And if, I mean, like, or do you just preface that as you are in those questions that, because we're keeping time to say, oh, we have, you know, time for one more? Just...
Right now, that section says, "To make time for as many voices as possible to be heard, we will ask each person to limit themselves to no more than two minutes." We could just add a... We will be spending no more than X amount of time. 15 minutes on each question or whatever. That breakdown looks like 20 minutes on each question. And alternate ways of submitting feedback are the post-its and poster board or the survey link, the QR code, something to that effect. And then...
That can work perfectly. We can write that into the script easily.
And then I would just say if Board Member Two can kind of keep Board Member One on track. Yeah.
Yep, that makes sense.
We haven't talked yet about a situation which will likely come up, which we call a parking lot issue. So, I don't know, Kim, I'm thinking about, just even in the opening, and I know AJ said not to bring any questions, not to open it up for questions, but let's just say in your first question, well, I can tell you what I don't want. You know, I want somebody who can teach our kids to read because... And then they just go off on an incredibly long tirade about maybe what's wrong with the schools. Right? You know?
Yeah.
You can imagine the question or the statement. So how are we either reminding people what the scope?
So maybe that's also another statement in the norms of if you have feedback that is... For any school board members that is not relevant to the superintendent search, please feel free to put it on a post-it and this...
No card.
Or no card. Yeah. We still want to hear from you regarding other concerns. However, you know, our main focus today is the superintendent search and...
Let me ask a slightly different question. How comfortable... I don't know how much facilitation experience the seven of you have. Have the seven of you done a lot of public facilitation and feel a high degree of comfort? Or are there any among the seven of you who haven't done a lot and would like some additional coaching and support on that?
I feel comfortable.
I feel comfortable as well.
Okay. Never mind it.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yeah. Yeah, I feel comfortable. I think we all probably took really good notes too about just kind of some of those things that might happen. It sounds like all of us have been in situations where we've had to do some, something similar to this, I think. So if there's a comfortability there, I think we're ready. I think the most exciting part is just seeing who's going to show up and start to have those and to start to put ourselves out there. So it's kind of where I'm at with it.
Did we, Kelly, did we decide that, are we going to get a different template for note-taking or are we just going to use the script for note-taking?
I think, you know, I think I can pull something out and use the script as the template to just do a note-taking piece if people want that. I'm comfortable doing that.
I think it's really up to AJ and what format they want our notes in.
Yes, that was the other piece. AJ, how do you want this shared back with you?
So the way that we've done this in other places is the same thing I recommend here. You should have one survey that is available to your community so they can enter whatever their stuff is. You should have an entirely separate survey instrument, not the public survey instrument, one that only the board members have, the public does not have and will never have. And that is essentially identical and that, but that is specifically designed for the board members to type in their, the comments that they are hearing. You want to type it in in real time. Most board members will type faster than they write. And your typing will be easier to read than your writing. And so that is what we normally do is we'll set up two different surveys. One is designed for the community to enter their feedback to the questions, an entirely separate one, and it's important to have a different one, not the same one, so that you can keep the data segregated, is here is feedback that board members are inputting that they received from the sessions. And I just recommend that whoever is the one receiving it, you are just typing it in in real time and at the end of the meeting, you just hit send and you are done.
So you're going to put it in like a Google form?
So whoever's creating this, so do...
The survey is already done. Survey to the community is done.
Okay, so what was that created in?
Oh, Qualtrics, the district created it.
Okay, so you can either have them create another one of those and you can use that or I can create a Google form for you that you can fill in and hit send on at the end of each one. And I'm comfortable with either approach. But that is how I recommend that you capture the data, that it all gets loaded and dropped into a spreadsheet so that you have timestamps and all of that.
So will that be two separate surveys, one for each question?
No, no, it'd be one survey, you know, for both, you know, have space for question one and then space for question two.
So I'm completing one survey entry per listening session as Board Member Number Two? So I'm just going to do like one run long...
It depends on how you divide it up. It might be that Board Member Number One is doing the note-taking for question number one and then Board Member Number Two is doing the note-taking for question number two. So yours will only, you'll hit submit and only have responses to question number one and your colleague will hit submit and only have responses to question number two. That's perfectly fine. What's important is that all of this is going, being captured someplace different from where the public capture is. That's all.
Okay, so there's a couple of things I think are confusing here is we've been told that Board Member One has a very specific role and Board Member Two has a very specific role and not trading. The other thing is, as surveys go typically, I mean, if we're going to ask question one and get answers and then ask question two and get answers, we're going to be, are we, we're going to need to hit submit in between answers for each person if you want an individual timestamp. So that he's separate.
No, the point of this is not to have a different entry for every single person. That's not what you're trying to accomplish. You're trying to have, here are all of the answers that we heard to question one at this session. Here are all the answers we heard to question two at this session.
So you want just one long text box of every answer we received to question one? As a data person, that is horrifying to me, but okay, you're compiling, so that's great.
Yeah. Yeah, you're not really going to be treating them as each individual person. It's going to be, here's what we heard at this session. And in the, and in the form, there'll be a spot for you to put, you know, who did the listening and kind of where was the session and when was it? So that you have an idea of exactly where the data came from. But no, you're not expecting you to input that information for every single person who speaks. You literally won't be able to keep up with that.
So Kelly, you're going to get the final Google Doc from AJ and then just share it?
Yep, I'll show the link with everyone. So AJ, if you could put together the Google Doc, the Google Form link and then I'll share with the rest of the board.
Not a problem.
Unless you want to share with the board too, it doesn't really matter, I guess. But just as long as we get it before Saturday. Yeah, the link in the updated script, yeah. And if you could put points in the script, like what you mentioned around, just little pointers are always helpful too. I don't know if I captured all notes, but...
May I come and observe your first session at East on Saturday?
Yeah.
That was a question I had. For other districts that do this, like, is it recommended that, like, all board members come in and sit and watch everybody do their sessions?
Did you just say no?
I was asking because I imagine that some, you know, people probably do that because they want to come in and see how the other person's doing versus I'm doing. I might be the only one thinking that way. But I just want to know, like, is it, is it common for, like, the board to come in and watch other board members do their, do these sessions?
I would assume, and AJ, you can chime in, I would assume then you'd need to post it as a, as a meeting if you have a forum of board members. Just to be safe, I would, I would recommend, no, let the two people who are doing it do it, but... That works. That's my opinion.
Yeah.
I would be in that same boat too. It is just to allow the two that are signed up to be the ones there and then we don't worry about potential quorum.
Well, I think Marie and I are going to ask for an exception for Saturday if Kim is available because it's the first one and there could be kinks. And I think we just appreciate having an extra set of hands and we're not, we're not, as long as it's just Kim, we're only at three.
Yeah, I think that would be okay. Just as we, I don't want us to have to post all of these and say there's going to be all these people there. So for the first one, I say that's fine. I just say anything after that, it's just the two board members.
And also because if we have interpretation issues that come up, I just, I just think the dexterity of having three for the first meeting is a good idea.
If I could also ask whoever is the note-taker between the two of you and then Kim as an observer, to start that running tally of FAQs or things that may come up that could help build upon something we could put on a website with it being the first, the first one? I don't know if you recall.
FAQs for...
We talked about, like, if we get the questions of, how much are you going to pay the superintendent? Or what's your process? Like those questions, we could just put in an FAQ document.
Are we having any sign-in sheets or anything like that? Is that necessary?
We'll think about that. Yeah, I mean, yes is the answer. I mean, the whole, I think, when we're done with this, the, really the next phase is the experience. I will say it sounds like there is not a budget or a very, there's a very limited budget. So we either just have to say out loud that because there's a limited budget, we're just providing drinks or we have to identify how to access additional funds. So I'm not sure how strong people feel about this, if we want to target certain meetings and have food because we think that will drive attendance. But my sense, Rosie, just from the quick note that we just had is we don't have the budget for significant food at all of the events.
Correct. And I just brought that up because the majority of the budget is going to be allocated to paying the search firm. I just want to be cautious of that.
So I think we've got Saturday covered, so we have a little bit more time to think. But I don't think we have a plan beyond that. Meaning we've got Saturday covered because we're just going to figure it out.
And I also wanted to ask about childcare. That's also currently not in any of, like, the survey or...
I think when we met, we discussed that... I think when we met, we discussed that given our capacity and our budget, we did not have that to offer across the board. And that if it situationally came up through school personnel, through BFLs, then we try to address it that way. Because when we had our first session, that's what I thought I took away from the conversation. We just felt that it was not something we had the capacity to do.
And they're kid-friendly environments. Now, you know, people can bring their kids.
Yep.
You know, I'm not sure if they will feel fully engaged if, you know, if that be the case, but we definitely are not going to, not allow kids in. We would, you know, they're more than happy to come in, so.
Absolutely. Yeah. I agree. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear because you brought it up with a BFL, so just want to make sure that we're not expecting them to do childcare or count on any other resources.
The one question I have AJ and Cindy would be for the virtual sessions. And if, I mean, maybe a little different, I mean, it's same questions, but I don't know. If you have any pointers to share, if there's anything to consider or keep in mind when you're doing it virtually?
My experience, they run pretty much the exact same.
Okay.
I, I think two, two questions. One is something that I'm worried about. So I'll say to Rosie and maybe you and Phil and others can talk offline. I've seen so many online meetings go wrong fast. They, you know, they get taken over, the link gets out, et cetera. And we probably need to make sure somebody is on the meeting who actually knows how to shut down the meeting and/or the board members are prepared to do that because that can happen. And the second question, and it, it, it's in my comfort level, I don't know if it's in others, but we don't have the equivalent of the Post-it note option for people that are online. Now, I know, like, I've used different things like Poll Everywhere or Survey Monkey or even there's breakout rooms where you can do Post-it notes. Like, there's some sophisticated things you can do. But I, I think we would need an additional staff member. Rosie, whether that's you or there's somebody from the district team that really knows how to run engaging meetings. So is that something we should be putting more thought into? I'm wondering what other people think.
There's, oh, I cannot think of it. And I didn't think it was connected directly like with Zoom or one of the online things, but there is a tool you could use where folks could, it's like a whiteboard, similar to the Zoom whiteboard, where folks can just start to post their notes. I would have to go back and dig. I'll see what I can find and share it with you guys and get your thoughts on it.
Just another thought on that actually, because I just watched somebody facilitate a really great meeting. If we don't want to deal with the kind of breakout rooms or tech, Post-it notes and that kind of stuff, what we could just do is have somebody actively managing chat. So we might actually need a third person and it doesn't necessarily have to be a board member, but somebody who is regularly. So because somebody's going to comment, thank you for that comment, you know, like, I don't know that we'd say like, thank you for that comment. What I heard was, we don't need to say that because, but I think we, so somebody actively monitoring the chat function.
Well, the nice thing about the chat function too is we should, I think, again, I'm not as familiar with Teams, I'm more familiar with Zoom, but I assume we can download that chat and save and that's an easy way to capture those notes too, if folks do share thoughts in chat. And maybe that's just as simple as question one, like, if you're not comfortable sharing out loud with a group, you can share in chat.
Yep.
I need to hone in on.
Yeah, actually, but we'll probably need host-only. So like, we've got to do a little bit of work on the virtual meeting. So so Rosie, do you want to maybe talk to Phil or others to see kind of some of the meeting management best practices and if the Teams meeting were to get hijacked? How to address that and all of that? Thanks.
Yeah, I'll do that. Because I think we've been in a space where we don't allow for chat comments during our regular board meetings. So it's helpful to know that we need to open that up.
Well, or I think, could you change it? So if you have a comment that you'd like to share and you're not comfortable saying it out loud, could you, usually you can like chat the host or you can go to some, some person. So that person's actively just receiving the feedback. And whether we need a third board member to do that or another member of the DMPS staff, that might not be a bad idea. These are all the great kinks we have to work out.
Was there anything else from community engagement?
I don't think so. Thank you all. Thank you for being so responsive and signing up. And I know that we still have one board member to, you know, connect with and we'll get that done and adding up some more, the ones that Maria just heard about. So it's going to be a long few weeks.
Four weeks?
And just so people know, we just, December 7th will be when we'll, we have to, I have to add it, Kelly, the
Community Partners. One thing before we adjourn, because it just popped in my head, do we have anyone slated as just alternates? Life happens. I know we're all like, nope, I'm going to be there no matter what, but life happens. And do we have any alternates in place? So if Jackie couldn't be there, she could just call me and say, hey, you know, I, I'm willing to be available as much as possible, but I just don't know if we've thought about that and what to do in those instances. So I am willing to be an alternate. I'll look at those dates and, and I'll make sure to communicate with you all what dates I there are some dates I absolutely can't be available, but I am willing to be an alternate if that happens and life happens. And I don't know if anyone else is able to do the same, but I just thought we, we want to think about that because life happens.
Yeah, I'm wondering, maybe what we, go ahead, Kim.
It would be easier.
Than what you can do.
Well, if I were to know and like sign up in advance to be an alternate rather than an on-call type scenario, I think for planning purposes, knowing it, you know, just to keep it blocked off in the event that there's a concern, I think would.
We can add a column and then folks could sign up as an alternate if they want to be considered as an alternate just in case.
All right. Well, I think that's everything. Thank you all. And we'll adjourn for this evening. Thanks AJ. Thanks Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you.